For Wednesday, April 7th at 7:00 PM. And the only agenda item tonight is a discussion with North Brown LLC about some project changes, request for determination of insubstantiality, North Village comprehensive permit. And Ed, do you want to start?
One second, Ed. Ken, because I just realized, can we vote on this, the three of us?
I don't know what happened.
Brian, we have three out of the five members here. Are we able to vote on that?
Yes, you can proceed.
Okay. Yep, okay.
Hi.
I just wanted to make sure that you were good, Ed, that's all. Sorry. You're good to go.
Who do we have? Did you do a roll call to get started? I'm sorry, I just didn't write down the names who you got now.
Okay.
Just make sure I got everybody on my list.
Yeah, hi, Dan Healy.
John, go ahead.
Hi, John O'Meara.
Hi, Mike Fitzpatrick. Absent is Ron Forgett, Louis Tassino, and Sean Holland.
Great. Sean has an excused absence for the record, and Mr. Tassino and Mr. Forgett have unexcused absences. Okay, Ed, you want to join us? Yeah, come on in.
Where?
Right there's it.
Anywhere you want.
Yeah. I don't see an easel around.
Can anybody see it from here? Want one of these?
Sure, appreciate it, Kent.
Uh, yeah, probably. That's the camera, right?
I'm getting this angle, just have him turn it a little bit towards you.
Turn a little bit towards me, Ed. How's that? Good? Okay, you got it.
Can you see? You guys see it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can see it. Okay.
So, I forwarded a letter to the board last week where we requested three items that we wanted to discuss in terms of determinations of insubstantiability or insubstantiality. And I can go through them in order?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The first one is on the phasing. And as was shown on this plan, what we would like to do is to substitute Phase Four for Phase Three. In other words, under the approved plan, this was Phase Three here was designated as Phase Four. This was designated as Phase Three. And as the board is probably aware, this area has all been cleared as part of the road construction. Oh, there he is.
Were you waiting for me?
Absolutely, Louis.
Okay. I had to go to a wake and I got chatted in traffic.
Oh, my goodness.
Penis Chamberlain.
Oh, yeah, I heard about it.
Brian, Louis Tassino, join the meeting.
Okay. See?
So, right now, we have a construction entrance here where the road to Phase Three would be. It goes over to here and accesses the units that we're constructing in Phase Two. And again, as I mentioned, this area has been cleared as part of the road construction. So rather than going over here, clearing this area, and leaving this undone, and cutting off the construction road, what we'd like to do is construct this phase first so that we can keep the construction road in here, and then complete this area, complete this phase, and complete the grading in that phase because we think the grading plan, it's a low-impact development. And it would work better if this was built out. Basically, the way the drainage on the site goes is most everything here, from here over, goes this way, and from here over goes that. So this cleared area right now, there's a lot of, there's water that runs off and sometimes stays in some of these basins where the storm cells that are on this side. So we think it would improve the drainage, and it would aid the construction and keep the construction traffic away from the built part of the project. So we can, do you want to address each one as we go, or?
Yeah, okay. I don't know, say, more members have any questions about their proposal to do Phase Four prior to Phase Three?
So you weren't supposed to go up.
On the original plan, this was called Phase Three, and this was called Phase Four.
Okay.
Okay, the permit doesn't specify that the phasing has to be sequential, but, you know, the way they're numbered numerically, it would indicate that. So just so there's no confusion, we think it makes more sense to do this phase first and then do this one last. It would also allow us to loop the infrastructure, so the water sewer, which currently dead ends right here, would be able to loop back into Compass Point Drive.
Are you doing this, Sean Warren?
Yeah, we got, everything in Phase Two is under agreement, which is why we want to get on to the next phase. We have, in Phase Two, we have, it's been 18 months, it's been more than 18 months since we started construction, and we've sold 18 units in Phase Two, and there are 34 units in Phase Two, so we've sold more than half. So under the permit, those are the two criteria for proceeding to the next phase.
Right, 50% of sales.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anybody on screen or in the building that has any questions?
Actually, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
I took a ride up through there this afternoon on my way back, because I haven't been in there in quite some time.
Yeah.
Between that and if I went through the right spot, behind those houses in Phase Two, there's quite the pile of material.
Yes.
What are you going to do with that?
The material?
Yeah.
On-site?
Yeah.
Well, we'll use a good part of it on-site.
Okay, so you're just going to relocate it to Phase?
Well, yeah, well.
Phase Three?
Anything that, if there's, yeah, any excess material, we'd move over to this area. This is clear, I'm not sure, quite sure of the limits, but it's clear probably over to the roadway.
Yeah, if I could answer, there's, Tim Barlow, site contractor, there's three different piles, one's loom, one's general fill.
Yep.
And one's gravelly material, and we got a pile of stone. We're going to crush the stone, mix it with the gravel, and hopefully generate some road gravel, and gravel we can use on-site.
Right.
The general fill, we're going to screen the big rocks out of that and use that for fill in Phase Four, and the loom, we're going to screen and use on-site.
Yeah.
But it's all getting moved.
When I came in, I came in, I came down Phase One, up Phase Two.
Yeah.
And I got to right where that water pipe is exposed.
Yeah.
And then came down through the center, so that's where that road is that you're talking about?
Yes, and that's all loom, and that's on the other side. That loom pile is here.
Yeah, but I'm not looking at that. What I'm looking at, so when I took a right onto that center road that you're going to come down.
Here.
To my right was a huge.
Or here.
Yep, there's a huge pile of.
That's general fill.
Yep, that's going to be.
We're going to screen that over to here.
That's all your retention basins over in that area? Is there retention basins back there?
Well, no. There's some swales that go through here.
Are there swales?
Yeah, and there's all base, the big basins are over here.
Yep.
But it's all going to be moved.
So you're going to address all that before you start construction?
Well, no, we're starting construction here. This, we're going to come in this way.
Is the infrastructure in?
No, that's what we want to get started on, the infrastructure.
All right, so you're not starting any foundations, you've got to do the infrastructure in the road before you get into the foundation?
No, we'd like to do them in parallel. We'd like to put some foundations in here and bring this road in.
That's the way we did it in Phase Two. We started building.
Yeah, I remember there was some conversations and confusion over that, so that's why I'm asking the question now.
Yeah, but that's what we would like to do.
Because a couple of them, I remember the chief bringing up before that about having that road paved versus having it mowed if there was a situation, as well as being able to do any potential firefighting if there was something that.
That wasn't the units under construction, that was while, for the conveyed units. When we go to sell them, the pavement has to be binded. And the chief was concerned at where we end the pavement, that there's a terminus, so we had to do a turnaround.
Yeah, yeah, that too. So anyways, we'll get into it.
But anyhow, our plan is to, before we are actually conveying anything in here, this road will be completed and connected. But we want to start building while we're constructing the infrastructure.
Yeah, I seem to remember there was some confusion about that, but it's not what we wanted, but somehow it happened.
No.
No.
No, it was understood from the beginning when we did the MOU on the cistern, it was agreed that we would, we could put in up to, we could put these five buildings in until the cistern was installed, and then when the cistern was installed, then we kept on building. But we did those, we did these buildings, we did these foundations at the same time that we were starting construction of the road.
It's in the MOU that we could do it that way, it didn't need to be paved, that it just had to be gravelly and could be travelable.
And it was, the confusion might have been going beyond the initial five, and that's when we put in the turnaround at the end of the, at the end of the phase.
Yeah, because we had quite a debate about public safety equipment getting up there, and if the road wasn't passable, there were issues.
Yeah, it was confusing.
Okay.
What's the buildings were being sold compared to under construction? No, it wasn't that way.
All right, so anyways, we, whatever happened at that point, moving forward from this point, I would like some input from the fire chief to find out, some clarity to find out what he actually wants up there.
So I have no problem with them doing Phase Four first and.
No, I think logistically it makes perfect sense because you're not going to be going through a neighborhood to do Phase Four after you got Phase Three done. That all makes perfect sense.
However, I don't like the whole gravel road thing. I'd like a base coat of pavement so that when they're building, we're not having issues trying to get in and out of there if there's an incident, whether it be a construction worker during construction or.
Well, that's new because that wasn't the way that Phase Two was.
I remember that quite clearly, just the way Kent said it.
I have.
No.
I think we bent the rules last time, and I'm just not going to do that.
No, no, no.
Phase One was constructed in this manner where we were doing the infrastructure and building units in parallel. Phase One, the whole way through was built that way. The whole of Phase Two was built that way.
At what point are you going to stop the infrastructure?
We'd like to start right away.
Right away.
Couple of weeks.
All right, so I, you said it looped around, so if it starts from here and you're going up.
Yeah.
You won't energize that until you're tied into the end of the end, correct?
Well, the.
Now, I'm just trying to understand, and it might answer.
We probably won't, but there's a hydrant right in the middle.
There is a hydrant there?
Yeah, there's a hydrant, it's not installed yet.
Oh.
But when we bring the water line, water main through, there's a hydrant in the middle, but the sewer splits both ways. So you could really build half a phase.
What's the length of that?
About 800 feet.
About 800 feet, so you're 400 feet in, where's the next fire hydrant? And I'm asking these questions to.
It's here.
There's one there, so you're.
Yeah, and there's one down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why the one's in the middle about halfway. But that's the way we've constructed this project from the beginning.
Yeah.
Was the infrastructure and building at the same time.
The amendment to the MOU that we did when, for the cistern, page three, paragraph one, paragraph one C, I guess, "Work in Phase Two of the project may continue during the design and installation of the cistern, including the issuance of up to eight building permits for units 17, 18, 19, 20, 65, 66, 67 within Phase Two, as shown on the approved plans, with the gravel base for the roadway in front of said units in place prior to the issuance of building permits." And the, again, and the chief was, I believe, in agreement with us at that time, in agreement with the MOU.
I had nothing to do with the MOU, that was long before me. I didn't, I didn't have anything to do with the MOU.
This was the amended MOU we did for the cistern.
No, I didn't have anything to do with that.
Yeah, you did, but, okay. This was done in October of 2018, and I think you were involved.
All right, so, Dan, can I do that?
And I think I would say that I pushed back on the whole time on wanting a base pavement down the whole way.
Yeah.
I allowed certain things, but I'm just not willing to do that now. Is that simple?
There's nothing in the permit that says that.
Okay.
Well, I mean, he doesn't want to risk town equipment going on an unpaved road. I mean, that's understandable, you know, and that's what we do in subdivisions throughout town. People don't get building permits till the pavement's down.
This is not a subdivision.
No, we can go, yeah, we can go round and round about that, but it's housing.
The, so you applied for four permits for the first section?
Eight.
Four buildings?
Four buildings. Before the cistern was even constructed.
Talking about right now, on Phase Four.
On this phase, yes, we've applied for, I don't know.
Four.
Okay.
So two foundations?
Right, which are down here.
Yep. It's just helping me understand what your thought process is on this. And you're going to start the infrastructure, but you're just going to keep building through it, but you're not going to market those for sale? The reason why I'm asking that, because I read this MOU, and you're correct about the gravel, it's not in there, I get all that. However, in order to get your occupancy, your base coat has to be in for your roads, sidewalks, driveways, and parking area, that's in there.
Agreed.
Yeah, it's in there, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
No debate.
Yeah, I absolutely agree.
I read through this stuff so I could have some understanding as to what, and everybody needs to talk and figure out, just so we can get to it.
Yeah, agreed.
But going forward is trying to build 800 feet of road and put on all these foundations, what's the plan, are you going to pave as you go, put base coat down, are you planning on leaving that a gravel road all the way through?
No, we would probably pave halfway through, depending on what happens.
And I'm not trying to trap you in, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
What the plan is, that's all, Tim. Nothing more than.
Probably paving halfway through, but it's to be determined.
Right.
The reason we want to do both at the same time.
Yep.
Is for, to stay on schedule. You want to be ready to sell and have product to sell as soon as you can.
But you have 50% of product to sell, so that's not in Phase Two.
No, Phase Two's sold out.
Where's the 50% that you were talking about? Oh, you exceeded the 50%?
We've conveyed 50%.
And the other 50%.
The other 50%.
All have closing dates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they purchased a seller.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's.
Hopefully a closing date.
Yeah.
Well, everything changes.
Yeah, getting occupancy.
But that's basically it, just to stay on schedule.
Yeah.
To have product to sell as soon as we can, to keep cash flowing.
Now, as Ed described at the beginning that the, if you don't mind if I.
No, go ahead.
Described at the beginning that the, all the flow goes to the left behind those houses that you're going to put on the, looking at the plan.
Correct.
Close that way, then that's where that huge pile of dirt is, so you're going to correct all those swales and all that stuff prior to putting in foundations?
No, you put in the foundations and do all the grading. The way that the low-impact works, you really need to get the foundations in.
I get that, you do your final grading around it.
Yes.
But that, the amount of material that's there?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty big. It's huge.
Yes.
So.
It's nothing we can't handle.
I'm not saying you can't handle it. What I'm looking for is an idea of what the schedule is going to be, and that's going to, that helps everybody make their decisions. It comes down to, Ken's got to make his decisions, Ken's got to make his decisions, John's going to have some input, most likely. Just to have a plan in place, you just put up houses, now you got all, you're going to have runoff from these things.
Yeah, now, the material will all be moved before we start doing foundations past the halfway point. Everything that's, we want to work on the first half of the infrastructure now and put in some foundations on the lower side. All the material that's here behind those is getting moved now. All this material will be moved as we're building this infrastructure, and obviously before we can put the foundations in, because it's sitting right where the foundations are going. My plan is before any units are conveyed or sold in Phase Three, or what will be Phase Three, the road will be paved straight through, it'll all be 100%.
Not to be a smartass?
Yeah.
But according to this, you have no choice?
No.
All that binder coat has to be in?
It says in front of the units. It doesn't say for the entire phase. But I plan on paving the entire phase at once.
Which phase are you talking about?
Well, not to be confusing, what is going to be, we would like to be Phase Three.
Yeah, you're going to.
So you're saying you want Phase Three to be Phase Four, though, right?
Yeah, that's what.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, he's going to make, he's going to reverse those two numbers.
Let's call it what it is on the print, so.
So the print now is Phase Four.
So I, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around where you said we're going to pave that all the way through.
Right, well, it's right here, chief.
To connect the road in the center.
Yeah, I want to do the center road instead of this one. This was Phase Three, this was Phase Four. I want to swap those two.
Right, I understand that, so.
Okay, so I want to pave this road.
So the present Phase Four was correct?
Yes, Road C, it's called Road C on the plan.
Okay. So you're saying you want to pave that right through in one shot?
Yes. Well, no, it'll be paved before any units are conveyed at Phase, so we don't have to do another cul-de-sac.
So he wants to just put foundations?
Just foundations in there.
As he goes through doing his excavation, he wants to put foundations before he conveys anything else paved.
He wants to build them out and not just foundations.
Before he conveys.
Well, yeah, but it's, he needs to understand that, cement he doesn't care about.
It's right, it's, security provisions on page 1240A.
So I'll read that for everybody so they understand what it is. It says, "No occupancy permit for a unit in any building or any phase shall be issued until the roadway, driveway, sidewalk, parking areas, as shown on final site plan necessary to serve such buildings, has been installed, accepting the final cost of pavement for the roads, drives, and parking area." That's the final code, you still have that base coat in.
To serve such building, it's for the building that we're asking for occupancy, not the entire phase. So if you want occupancy on a particular unit.
Mm-hmm.
The base coat needs to be down.
Yep.
But not the whole phase.
Not the, no, I never said the whole phase, but the.
Oh, then that's what I thought you were saying. But yes, to get occupancy permit, we need to have base coat down.
Right.
Agreed. But not for building permit.
No, not for building permit, I agree with you on that.
I don't know how this is any different than any other residential development. There's no, no one's built a, nobody's built a home in this town on an unpaved road in a subdivision.
Yeah, it's not a, Dan, it's a condominium project, it's not a subdivision.
This is written in, it's house written, they don't have to put their base coat down until they.
Well, we could be really strict, they're also, we're supposed to finish each phase before they move to the next phase.
No, that's not what it says, doesn't say that.
No, you know what, then we need to, I need to go over this before I even make a decision or vote on anything. This is just, no, this is not.
Is there?
So we take it we have no concern whatsoever for the town-owned equipment? If some guy gets hurt while you're working up there and the road's not paved and is.
What's different from this being 100 or 200 feet in than you building a single-family home and not having the driveway paved 200 feet back?
Well, there's a big difference. You're talking about multiple units in that 200 feet.
No, it'll be paved. You're, I'm talking about a unit on a construction, not a unit where somebody is living.
So you're saying you put the base coat down?
Before occupancy, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but what happens in the meantime?
It's the same as you building a house.
It's not the same.
200 feet off the road and not paving the driveway while your house is under construction.
Yeah, but that's, we're talking one unit versus in a couple hundred feet, how many units we have in a couple hundred feet?
Four.
Four.
Eight, right? Four, four, okay, eight units.
Yeah.
So the risk is eight times what it is on.
I don't know, that's a.
I don't know, has it ever?
It's the way we build, we have a precedent, it's the way we built the project.
It's the way, you're right, it's the way we built the project.
Yeah.
We were building.
I believe it happened by mistake at the time and it was just kind of let go.
It's how we built Phase One.
Yeah.
It's how we built Phase One, and it's how we built Phase Two.
When do you see you getting out of this?
At this rate?
Have you come here?
I may not.
The.
I'll be dead before then.
The rest of that section, Tim?
Yeah?
At the, at the end of it, it also, it says that the, after I got to the, the final cost, except for the final cost of pavement for the roadways, drives, and parking area, and all infrastructure as shown on the final site plan for such building, as approved by the board engineer, has been constructed and installed so it adequately serves the building.
Correct.
So you won't get any occupancies on any of those that you're putting up until you get that infrastructure all the way through, even if you only have the paving going up to the foundation, because it's going to work.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah. Is there any possible way that we can get some sort of schedule? The problem that we're having as a board, just so you, everybody's on page. Ed's letter brought a whole new dimension into this. My motivation at the very beginning was we no longer have a town engineer to work on the town's behalf, Ken's a new building official, so to bring everybody up to speed as to what's going on, we're getting into the building system, that's what started this. Blame me, it was my bright idea, but whatever. It was just to get everybody on the same page, and this just adds a new element to it. Is there any way we can get some sort of schedule as to what you're thinking about moving forward so it is going to be easier for you, Neil, me, Ed, Dan, Ken, Ken, John?
Absolutely, yeah. We were doing that for Bill, we were sending him a schedule.
Right.
So that was one of the questions Ed had tonight was, who's the new Bill? Who do we report to?
Yeah, that was, yeah, the third point in my letter is, you know, who's, who is the, who is the board's engineer at this point?
Well, you could send, you could, not the board engineer, but if you have a schedule, because Ken's going to be in, correct me if you don't agree, he's the, your point of contact out on the site anyways for inspections and stuff, and if he has some, he's the zoning enforcement agent, so if he has any issue, if we have issue, we have somebody that we can connect, connect with. It wouldn't do any good to send it to Ken, Kent, John, Matt, or anybody like that. If it goes to him, we can track him down.
Absolutely, and that was.
And then we can stay on the same page, but it's going to be helpful for him to have some sort of idea of what's going to be going on, you know, what your schedule is, what you're thinking. Is there even moving that dirt?
Yeah.
Because he's going to be looking at stormwater management and whatnot. Riding through there, I noticed that some of the sidewalks aren't 100% complete and Riding through there, I noticed that some of the sidewalks aren't 100% complete and other areas. I don't know what your plan is for that, but that's in here. So there's gotta be some sort of plan for that. You don't have to tell me that. Give him an idea of what that plan is, because we're charged with enforcing this or monitoring it or whatever it is that we're charged with. It'll be a lot easier that Dan can turn around, send him an email and say, hey, what's the status? What's going on with this? We're through and I noticed it's been two months since our last meeting and nothing's changed on the sidewalk, so I think that'll help a lot. Interested to see if John has any input, what... Any concerns that he has up there and what Kent is as far as... It's a legitimate concern, because a lot of times fires do happen in construction. We've all been pretty fortunate that it hasn't happened, but that's usually when you got some dope that's got 47 things plugged into one little zip strip and it catches on fire.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure he's comfortable, so he can do what he needs to do to cover that problem, so.
So I think that report should be at least monthly, the first of every month, because there was issues.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, John.
Just a quick... A couple of quick questions. Mr. Ty Lee, you seem to have the water sewer already going down that faceboard?
No. No, John.
No. So I heard something about the fire hydrant is... Like, was it in the center of the road?
It will be. It's supposed to be in the center of that road. The road's gonna be about 800 feet from the top to the bottom of the circle.
Okay.
So it'll be about 400 feet in between hydrants.
Right now, I mean, I've asked questions. We got... Of course, the town engineer, of course, is gone. Doug Bush has been, I can guess, on top of this with his... With his company. I emailed today from Maria with questions and stuff like that. I mean, my people's... Let them come out there at least once every, I'm gonna say, two and a half weeks if we talk to the slide, you know, we guys, because we need some follow-up on this. And as far as the roads and the way the houses are built, the times that I've been up there, now, I haven't been there in a month, and I'll admit that, but I'd be driving along on asphalt and all of a sudden I'm off of it and there's three or four houses being built. And I always understood that that's where it was all done, under the agreement that was signed, so other than that, I don't have too much until you wanna get into what the engineers sent us. Just today, I don't know if we could... Can we speak about it, you know?
Yep. Did you get a copy of the engineer's report?
We did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Those reports... This is nothing new. Those reports have been going out on a periodic basis for the entire duration of the project.
Except for the during...
Except for when?
During the past... This past month?
In the last time?
The past... Well, the... No, when we're doing work. We haven't been doing any infrastructure work, but when we're doing work, there's been a schedule that's worked... That was worked out with the town engineer, when... How that work would proceed, and Leonard would come out and do inspections periodically as that work was ongoing and issue reports like the one you have in front of you.
Okay.
So that's not a new procedure. It's what has been.
As a judgment, I don't have any problem jumping from Phase 3 to Phase 4 instead, so... But then, you know...
Comment? Comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think it would be beneficial to have Ken, because he's gonna be up there on a regular basis, whether he's doing a foundation inspection or whatever, if he's getting... He has this report from Leonard as well, so he can monitor that stuff. If he finds that he needs the engineering firm to come in for whatever reason, whether it's the washout or whatever it is that they have to look at, he can contact them. The question that's come to mind is that 53G account. Now, Bill used to monitor that thing, and you got down to like 25%, and then he'd have to replenish it. Any idea where we're at with that now?
I haven't had it accounting lately.
Can you look into that to make sure? Because we don't wanna end up in a negative with Leonard's invoices coming in.
I'll check. Go ahead tomorrow.
Usually Maria was doing that, and when it got down...
Maria's done two days a week.
She would send... She would send me an email and...
Yeah.
Come in with a check, so hasn't been an issue in the best.
Make sure that that's up to snuff.
So essentially, the building inspector would now take the position of what's identified as the town engineer in the...
He'll alert us to anything. We can't make that decision, who's gonna be replacing the town engineer's position. That's gonna have to come from the board of selectmen. But in the interim, we need something. You need it, and we need it, so...
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I think, and we can confirm this with Matt tomorrow, I think it would be beneficial to both the town and to you guys, that you had somebody to talk to, at least.
Yeah, no, we have no problem with that.
You can grab his ear and you can say, hey, we got this issue. We haven't got an answer on it. He can help facilitate getting that answer for you.
Yeah, no, we have no problem with that. We just need to know... We just need to know who to contact.
But Mike, you're throwing all this at Ken, whether he has no... He's not asking for any input, does he? Who knows if he even has the time?
I'm not throwing it all at him. It's like I said, we have to talk to the administrator and confirm it, but in the meantime, while he's going down there for other inspections, he can somewhat monitor what's going on. What we have going on down there, we have the large pile of dirt that we're talking about. We're talking about bringing the infrastructure and the road up in there. If he's getting applications for permits and they got 12 foundations in and they have no infrastructure or anything, he can be like, whoa, wait a minute, timeout. What's the plan here, guys? He's up there. It's not... I'm not asking him to make any special trip, but he's there. We need to have something in there.
I'm sure there'll be issues that come up that are unrelated to the building.
No, I understand.
There's a road being put in. It's not gonna be when I'm up there for insulation, I'll check on it.
He's not gonna be doing that, but if he's going up there to do a foundation inspection and they are putting in the road, it's like, you guys calling, not, ah, yeah, we forgot. Well, then he can turn around and he can... When he comes back...
If I can make comment?
Yes.
I don't have a problem being a liaison between the parties here. I am here every day, and if I can get the reports, at least I can make sure that they're forwarded to you guys in a timely fashion. But we deal with the reason why here two days a week. I can get those out. I don't have a problem with that. But I don't have a problem with that. They have a question, they can call me and I can make the contacts to get it out there and find the answer for them.
Yeah.
That's not an issue.
Okay.
Just for... Just for argument's sake, if it goes to him, when Ed dropped off the... That letter, it was on April 1st, on a...
For the...
No, it was on the 30th. It was on the Wednesday. Maria was out sick. I happened to be in the office for something, and Jackie... Pam walked in with it and dropped it off and said, oh, it's something from Maria from North Brown. I said, what is that? It didn't... I took that and I walked down to Matt's office and had him open it up, because I didn't know if it was time-sensitive. Actually, it was time-sensitive, because if we didn't hear that and talk to you tonight, your 20 days, you've got it automatically, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so it was time-sensitive, so instead of having that happen...
I had also... Just... I don't mean to interrupt you. I had also emailed it to Maria that same day.
Maria was out sick.
So she had it. I understand. I understand.
This is my point. Maria was out sick. She works two days a week. She was out one day. No guarantee she was coming in the second day, and that was last week, and our meeting's now. So if we didn't hear it now and we didn't get it until after the meeting, you gotta by default. If it goes to him as a full-time employee, chances are we're gonna get it. That's my point.
Okay.
Maria's a part-time employee now. She's no longer full-time. You no longer have a town engineer standing there, sitting in that office. The only one left is poor Ken, so if he doesn't mind at least making sure that we get a... Get some acknowledgement on that. You dropped it off in the drop mailbox, right?
Yep.
So I just wanna make sure that if it's a time-sensitive thing, that we need to make sure we get it in a proper... So we can help you do whatever you need to do. I don't wanna be doing things by default. That doesn't help you or the town.
How was this job?
I think they started 2016. They originally started 2008, 2009, got their...
Yeah, we did.
Agreement in 2009. I don't know. Not that I was paying attention.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter. Just trying to help you through it. Not trying to... Your idea is fine. It comes down to, I know what the agreement says, but I also need to make sure that the departments that have to deal with it are comfortable with it, too.
Okay.
And that's all.
That's fair.
Trying to be difficult. I don't think anybody's trying to give you a hard time.
No, no, none... I don't believe that either. One of the reasons we're here is for that, is for clarification. Who do we talk to? Who do we communicate with?
Right.
What's the procedure? Because if you look at what we were just talking about in terms of the provision regarding the construction of infrastructure, it says, "All the infrastructure shown on the plans for such building as approved by the town engineer has been constructed and installed so it adequately serves said building." The procedure that we've been following is after we've completed construction of a unit and called for the final inspection from the building inspector, right? He comes out, does his inspections, and then it would go to the town engineer's desk.
Correct.
And he would review it in whatever...
Go through it in a checklist.
Go through it as a little checklist, and eventually the occupancy permit would be issued. The question is, how's that procedure gonna go now? Is the building inspector gonna make that determination?
We're gonna have to get clarification if you all mind.
Nope.
Clarification from the selectmen on that or through the town administrator. I would assume that what's gonna happen is Ken's gonna be spearheading it. Leonard's gonna be doing your inspections that you need done by the engineer. For yourself and for the town, I asked Jackie to get Ken a copy of the checklist that Bill was using. He has a little checklist that he goes through to make sure, just so everybody... It was consistent and it was just a more even flow for everybody moving forward. So we're not starting from scratch and all getting aggravated and trying to figure out a game plan to try to keep it going, so.
Okay. So going forward, because we've got units under construction in Phase 2 that we're gonna be looking for occupancy permits on. So it's getting... And Ken will come out and do his inspections, and then he'll go through that checklist and then...
Ultimately, he's the guy that signs off on your occupancy by mass building program.
Right, right. Well, that's fine. I mean, it works.
But he's ultimately got the final say on it, but he's also gonna be looking to make sure that the fire department's satisfied, water health, whoever it is, everybody that's you typically have on this stuff. If he has everybody satisfied and they're happy, then you get your occupancy. But as far as any engineering that's done by Leonard or whatever, he's gonna get his report, and if Leonard's the one that's... That they're gonna continue to use, I don't see any reason why they want it. They're gonna give their report just as they did here, and if he finds that it's minor in nature, then he just moves it along. If it's major, then he's gonna make a decision.
If there's any question with the engineering, just bring it to the board.
Yeah, okay. Kent and John, are you comfortable with construction going up without the road being paved?
I'm not, but I don't... I think that the water should be there if there's a fire, and I think the road should be solid to drive 36-ton vehicles on it. And I understand that they drive dump trucks that are full of dirt and stuff. We're not talking the same animal. I think there ought to be a base coat in what they're calling Phase 3 now, which was Phase 4. That ends at the cul-de-sac, right? Pave it from the beginning to the cul-de-sac and put it against it. That's what my expectation is. That's what my wish is. My job is to manage risk and to deal with problems when they're out of control and no one else can solve it, and to do it in a way that keeps my people safe and the people that are up in that project.
John, did you have any thoughts on that?
I'd go, Kent's... I mean, you're gonna put a base coat anyways at some point, so I don't know how long this stretch is without looking at the map, but you're gonna put a base coat down anyway.
Or that.
So, and then it's safer for the fire trucks, why don't we do it ahead of time?
But you gotta put the curb in, too. You got curb, right?
No.
No curb?
Nope.
So it's gonna get done regardless, now or later, so.
What? Is there any schedule for completing 1 and 2? Phase 1 and 2 with top coat and sidewalks, top coat and the... Top coat on the road?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I don't have it on the top of my head right now, but yeah.
Yeah. Then we do another...
We also need to keep construction going to be able to keep cash flowing, and what we're talking about, John, is being able to stay on a schedule with construction and not having to put in 1,000 linear feet of roadway and paving it before we can put in one foundation. And we're only asking to do what the protocol has been from the beginning of the project. I'm not asking for any changes. I'm asking to continue the way it's been constructed since 2016.
In Phase 1, we were constructing units at the same time that we were constructing the road, and in Phase 2, that happened as well. So this is... This is what you're... What you're doing is actually trying to change it.
So what are you trying to change? What are you trying to do?
We're not trying to change anything. We just wanna do what we've done. The only difference, from our point of view, is changing Phase 4 to Phase 3. That's the only difference. Otherwise, we wanna proceed as we have.
We're already pregnant, right? You guys gotta...
At what point are you gonna... Are you gonna run the water lineup to that hydrant?
To the hydrant in the building?
What are you thinking realistically?
That would be second, so it would be six, seven weeks in. So we're gonna do the sewer first, it's the deepest, and then we're gonna run the water.
So you're looking for these first four foundations, and then you're gonna start on... You won't be looking for any more foundations before you put in that water lineup today? I'm just asking you.
That could be true, yes.
I'm just asking you to...
No, no, that could be absolutely true. By the way, the schedule is yes. That would be all right.
What's the possibility of it not happening?
I don't know.
I know. I'm not trying to hold you to nothing, but...
I don't know.
I'm trying to work with you and trying to get to a point where we can just get through this and understand what you're doing. And I somewhat agree with the chief that if you're at the beginning of it and you have the first couple foundations, it's not a huge problem because he's got a hydrant right there. But you start getting 300 feet in, and you have no water.
I'll say this.
That's a problem for him.
I don't really care about foundations. It's when you stop building on them.
Yeah, but if they put in a foundation, they're gonna build. They're not gonna put in the foundation if they're not gonna build on it, because it makes no sense for them.
So why would you give this poor gentleman the job to do that?
Give him the job to do what?
To go up there and check that out.
He's going up there anyways.
Well, he's gonna do it in sync with Lenard.
As a rule, we always have an engineer, okay? So you're gonna do... This poor gentleman's gonna go up there, and they're gonna drive him crazy. Why would you do that?
See, you're talking eight... Four foundations, eight units, and then you would be on that infrastructure to get that, at least up to that hydrant.
We would have it. We would mostly...
Subdivision road wasn't paved?
For halfway up, which would be to the hydrant, yes.
And I don't... I personally don't think that's unreasonable. But you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I get it.
All the way up to the middle.
One conversation, please. Get two of them on there, I can't even stand.
So what Tim was just saying is, right now, they have two foundations at the front, four permits, correct?
Correct.
That proposed, that you applied for. Before he went past four foundations, or eight units, two on each side of the road, at that point would be his trigger point to get the water up to that center hydrant and get the pavement up halfway, right?
Yes, correct.
Yep.
Brian, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I mean, I understand you wanna understand the sort of circumstances and background and the sequence, and there's been some time and some changes in town, but, you know, sort of bringing it back to the question in front of you, some of this stuff is already kind of laid out, you know, in the documents that we're really not changing tonight. I mean, ultimately, you're gonna come back to the question of whether or not this is insubstantial and have to decide that. Some of this, these other sort of issues become a little bit collateral, because you've got the MOU, you've got the language and the documents, and we're gonna have to communicate on how that's gonna happen in real time and how it's gonna work out as the construction unfolds, but, you know... So at the same time, I understand it's important to straighten this out and understand it, but it's also not the question that you're gonna have to decide when you come to a vote on this necessarily. So really, the only question before you is, can they proceed with Phase 4 first? So you're gonna have to circle back to that, and some of these other things are gonna be ongoing. And we're gonna have to work through Ken and work through Lenard and straighten them out as the issues come up.
Yeah.
Kim, if I can just respond?
Yeah, go ahead. Sure.
Atlanta Court, Bremer Law Group, for the applicants for the developer. I agree 100% with what Town Council has said. We really... And I understand the discussion that's been happening as well, and I understand... And that's why the developer's here, to have this relationship with you, to have communication so that there are no misunderstandings going forward. But the real question is, can Phase 4 be substituted for Phase 3? And the issue of how Phase 4 is constructed, it has to be constructed in accordance with the permit. Nothing about that is changing. And so that needs to go forward the way that it's supposed to go forward. And so really, truly, as Attorney Leonard said, the only question before you on item number one is whether to allow Phase 4 to happen before Phase 3. That's really the only question.
Brian, what are your thoughts about having three-quarters of the development built with no top coat on any of it?
Well, so I'm not trying to be dismissive or curt in saying what I'm about to say, but that's, you know, a construction sequencing issue that's dealt with in permitting that's just not on your agenda for tonight.
Oh, I understand that, but...
Yeah, so, I mean, and again, I'm not trying to be dismissive. I'm not trying to sidestep your question, because it's an important one, but that dialogue is gonna have to occur at other meetings as issues arise in a proper context. We're not gonna be able to deal with it tonight. There's no vehicle before you that's gonna allow you to make a change to any of those, you know, conditions of the permit. So, you know, we're not gonna resolve that tonight, because there's the long shot of it.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with that, Brian. And we're all in agreement as to what we're voting on as far as reversing 3 and 4 in the phasing. Everybody appears to be in agreement on that. On our agenda, we also have discussion about North Brown. It's under the discussion portion of it, and that's all we're doing, is discussing it. And it's... I understand what the agreement says, the MOU. I've read it. We're just trying to come... It's just a mutually agreed-upon working relationship between the developer and the town, and it's like that I just had that discussion with Tim. I'm not trying to bend his arm around, just trying to get an idea around, and he's willing to compromise somewhat and help us all get to a place where everybody can leave this meeting happy, okay? If he's saying that he's gonna have four foundations in, eight units, and then he's gonna be starting the infrastructure and getting the pavement halfway up, even though that's not written in the paper, and he's agreeing to do that, I don't see any harm in that.
Look, the biggest thing we got here is there's no bond.
Right.
There's nobody to go get the money from.
Right.
If you read this thing, Louis, that's all addressed prior to the start of Phase 4, okay?
Louis, it's not a town road. It's never gonna be a town road. But there'd be 120 town residents who live there that have a big investment in their life.
I'm not against it. I think it's a great idea. But Jesus Christ, you've been here six years for 120... 120 hours. What the hell are you doing?
Things take time.
They can't control the economy of sales.
They do well.
We all wish we could.
Don't hurt your pockets a little bit, we're sorry.
Okay.
We're not here for that, Tim.
Yeah, okay.
Please stay focused.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I mean, we're really getting into weeds, we got to look, we figured it shouldn't happen, but I forgot all about that Kent was part of our team, we prepared these supposed new buildings, but in him being able to go up there all the time, he'll help us out quite a bit and just keep his eyes open on whatever is going on. I think at this point, they should go back to the town administrator and find out a plan we can work together with the two of you, rather than trying to kill us all right here. And I understand the circumstances with the fire department and the residents, but we're gonna start with some kind of a plan. Right now, we're just beating the dead horse, talking about, you know, what's gonna happen, we don't know. So I would ask Kent, because he's in touch with the superintendent, I'm sorry, the town administrator more than I am, to facilitate that and to make it easier on all of us. And Doug Bush, I mean, if he has any input on it, like I said, I would like to see him go out there every two and a half weeks to take a look, if that's okay with the person at town administrator and the selectmen, so.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily, if you don't mind.
Nope.
I wouldn't necessarily dictate that they are gonna go out there every two and a half weeks, because if they're not needed out...
I'm saying, Mike, it's just let's not kill it here. Let's find out what we wanna do with the selectmen.
All I'm doing is addressing your...
...an empty position in the town hall of an engineer.
Yeah, but...
And we do have an outside engineer that's been working with us since the start of it, of course, and I can honestly say that they've done a good job so far, so.
Yep.
I just, like I said, we just... We keep on talking about the same thing, and...
No, absolutely. What my point is, John, is Tim just said that it's gonna be about six weeks before he's doing infrastructure and roads and stuff like that, so that...
Yeah.
There's no reason to send out the consulting engineer every two and a half weeks. What are they gonna look at? Is if there's a major...
Well, that's what I mean. We gotta start somewhere. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
We gotta start somewhere. Well, Kent is gonna be there twice more times than I am, and more times than probably you up until that, so that's my opinion, that's all. It's just, I think we're just beating the dead horse here.
Right. And I believe, John, those inspections are being made twice a month or as needed.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You're right, Dan.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I... Excuse me.
Go ahead.
This is all, you know, we've been after this and after this and after this now, like six years. It's completely crazy. Why should we use our building inspector, the guy we pay, okay, to be up there when... That's completely crazy. Why should he be responsible?
He's not responsible. Look, pay attention to what I'm saying. He's not responsible for it. He's going up there on regular inspections, and while he's up there, he can just see what... If he sees the road going in or whatever, and Lenard's not up there doing the inspection, then he just makes a call, make sure that they're on track. That's all. It's not a babysitting thing. And we're getting way off the point. Getting back to Brian's point, we're here to make a decision whether or not we want to allow them to switch 3 and 4, okay? Tim is willing to work with us to address the concerns of the fire chief on the getting the water in there and the pavement on there. I think it's a reasonable plan. He's gonna work on getting a... Some sort of schedule to Ken, so he knows what to expect.
We should have a timeframe. Let's have timeframes.
Timeframes.
When do we get the schedule? A week? Two weeks?
Yeah, we can do a schedule.
All right.
Yeah.
Before the end of this week. Yeah.
Okay.
Put a schedule together before the end of the week. We'll send it over to Ken.
Yep.
What we were doing with Bill was, we were... He was getting an updated schedule every month, and then we were having quarterly meetings with Bill.
Yep.
So, and that's all spelled out in the permit.
Yep, no...
And we'll just continue that way. Our question really was, with Bill gone, is Ken now in Bill's seat?
I was in... You're here differently. I would suggest that you contact him, so then you had somebody that was here full-time.
Yep.
Dan can reach out to the administrator tomorrow and confirm or deny that, and they'll be in touch with you if there's a difference in that. So do we need to close the... There's no other information?
No, we have other things to talk about. We can vote on each one.
Yeah, yeah, we could vote on the first one first.
So the vote would be to allow them to change the construction of the phases, doing Phase 4 prior to Phase 3.
Yeah. So moved on my part.
Okay.
So you want me to repeat that?
Sure.
Okay. So, I make a motion to allow them to exchange Phase 3 with 4, so they're gonna be doing Phase 4 prior to Phase 3.
Mm-hmm. We have a second?
Second.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Tosino. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Dan Heaney?
Mike Fitzpatrick out.
I, John Mulroney.
I, Louis Tosino.
There we go. All right, let's move on to the next.
Yeah, that was good.
It's painful, but...
That was the easiest one.
So it's the next one that we gotta do.
Well, I...
Come on, man. I'm gonna read it.
Let's move to 3, because we've already talked about 3 to some extent. The question in 3 is, who is now going to... What's the procedure for signing off on occupancy permits? And who makes that determination? And I believe what you had indicated is that it would be the town building inspector.
Thank you, John.
Can I, John?
Hi, John. Have a good night.
The... Well, ultimately, the building commissioner signs off on your occupancy.
Yeah.
And he just needs to confirm what the administrator has to the procedure that he's gonna follow. I don't see how it's gonna be much different. He's got a checklist that he goes through. If he's satisfied, he's the one that's gonna be putting his name on it.
Okay.
He's kind of a stick.
So I think the occupancy permits are months away.
Yep.
Well, no, no, we have...
Phase 2 occupancy permit.
Phase 2, all right.
Ken had a question.
Go ahead, Ken.
So with regards to the occupancies, and that Phase 2 that you're doing, that's already been, for a lot of other words, released for construction purposes.
Right.
So there's not an issue with that, but moving forward with that phase now being Phase 3, which was 4, without sign-offs from engineering, I still can't sign off on occupancy. So that'll have to be the checklist, if we can find what they had for the previous checklist to find out what sequence. I can carry that checklist forward.
Okay.
To best my ability to do that.
Right.
But I still cannot sign off on it unless we have that checklist and it is signed off.
As to the next phase?
Yep.
Agreed. Okay.
Yeah, because I would think that the Board of Selectmen need to... Because town engineer is stamped all over this thing. So we need some clarity for them and for us as to how that identification gets addressed.
Well, I would say if they do the things that are on the checklist that have been used by the former town engineer, there should be no issues.
Right.
Checklist isn't gonna change. Just the person monitoring it's gonna be different, at least temporarily. So as long as you do the same things that you did previously for Bill...
Well, not being held up now, but just to get a little clarity for both them and for us, I guess Matt could reach out to Brian, and they can figure out what they're gonna do with that. And maybe there's a modification to this MOU. I don't know how that works.
So, going forward, for the completion of Phase 2, the building inspector will make the determination after his final inspections on the issuance of occupancies, right? Right. But he's gonna need Lenard to... As to the next phase? Yeah, and I think Lenard, actually...
Well, they still, you know, I still need the pin foundations on the clock plans and all that.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, and if there was any extension of the infrastructure or the construction of the road or anything.
Sure.
In that Phase 2 that has not been signed off by the town engineer or whoever's working at the town engineer, Lenard, that needs to be signed off before... Because I think you got, what do you got, six more foundations up there that you're in process of working on now between forward and framing and finishing?
Yeah, six units.
Six units at the end of that Phase 2 that you're gonna look to for completion on, and that just... There's gonna have to be all that engineering documentation that would be needed for the completion of that phase is gonna have to be there for them.
No, that infrastructure... I'm sorry, Neil Vervicki?
Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
That infrastructure's currently in the service of those...
Yeah, I'm not talking infrastructure. I'm just talking that phase of the development. Is there a... Has there been a final sign-off in Phase 1 with the town...
Is there an ad built and stuff done on that?
No, I think going into Phase 1.
On Phase 1, yes.
Sign-off in Phase 2.
Right.
Outside of the final grade, you know, final paving, sidewalks and all that.
Okay.
It's kind of spelled out. Again, maybe I could meet with you and we could go through the comprehensive permit, but it's spelled out under security provisions 40A on what needs to be in for the occupancy.
Okay.
And how we were doing it in the past with Bill.
I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing. I'll review the document. Yeah, so it's all the things that he said, final site plans for each building, so basically an ad built on that. And your ad built is pulled off the proposed center of the road.
Yes.
I don't want Neil out there with a sword again. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, so... Okay, so I think we've addressed 3 as best we were able to. I think we're in agreement on that.
Yep.
So the other one is the pricing of the affordables. The regulatory agreement that we signed back in 2016 with DHCD and with the town had
in Exhibit B, I believe, the determination of the price for the affordables. And that was done, that was determined by DHCD using their metrics for what, and since that time, the metrics have changed. The allowable price has changed, and based on what we were told by DHCD, they would be agreeable to increasing the sale amount to 246, 700. So we just want the Board to be aware of it and to approve that. I don't see an issue from the town's point of view with that.
Does that affect the units in the next phase or this phase?
It would affect all the units that aren't under, under agreement.
That are not under agreement, okay.
Right.
All right.
So if we could just have a...
So you made us, or you're sending something to the Board of Selectmen to make...
We will, yes, if, if you're fine with it, we'll prepare the amendment, work with Town Council, get the amendment to Town Council, and then get it to the Board of Selectmen for their action.
Can I ask Brian a question?
Sure.
Brian, on this valuation that they're changing on that, how do we get confirmation on that?
Confirmation as to, so there's...
What that dollar amount, because they're changing, I don't know how they figure this out, so if we're going to agree to the increase of the, go from 183 up to 246, I don't want to do it, nothing against that, but I don't want to do it by word. I'd rather have some sort of confirmation that that number's accurate.
Well, the DH...
Right, right, so there's a couple steps in this process, and the first one is the only one they're asking for you guys actually vote on, I understand the question. So in order to make the changes sort of that come later in the process, they first have to get your agreement that it's an insubstantial modification because it's incorporated, it's an exhibit in the common permit, so they're also going to have to, and Attorney Court can speak to this after me, they're going to have to amend the regulatory agreement, which is going to have to include a sign-off from the state that that in fact is the right number and the appropriate number.
Okay.
That check and balance is going to occur, but in order to get to that step, they need to have your vote first.
Yep.
And once they have your sense of that change, then they'll go ahead and get confirmation, make that change, it'll get circulated back to you, we're going to see a copy, and you'll get that affirmation at that stage.
Okay, so we're just agreeing that there will be an actual, that there's a change, but we don't necessarily have to confirm that that dollar amount's correct?
Right, so they're going to have to amend the regulatory agreement.
Yes.
I'm just waiting and saying that Town Council is exactly correct, and we've already worked with subsidizing agency with respect to the numbers, they're familiar with the numbers, but yes, the regulatory agreements will not be amended fully until the subsidizing agency signs off on these pricing numbers, and they have already agreed to them.
And that's the agency that confirms that, we would have done it in the first place.
So we would just vote to agree with the new sale price that the regulatory people determine is correct?
Right, and that's their jurisdiction to decide.
Right.
And that would be a fine way to do it, to say, you know, subject to the regulatory agreements being signed off on by the subsidizing agency.
All right.
So we need to...
We need a motion to...
To accept their modification to the affordable unit costs?
I think we should agree to vote to accept the new pricing for the affordable units as determined by the regulatory people.
As determined, right, right. So moved, I repeat that.
Okay. We have a second, Lou?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Tosino. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Roll call, John.
Tom Mulroney, aye. Louis Tisano, aye.
Dan Heaney, aye.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, next.
That's it.
That's it.
Three things.
And we're going to try to reach out to Maria and just see where we stand on the 53G.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
And I know you've been...
Yeah.
Updating it as, as required.
Whatever, whatever you need.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is a housekeeping matter.
Yep.
I think for the last one, Attorney Court was involved in that as well. We circulated sort of a draft memorandum of decision, so you can all see exactly what your votes were, and you can sign off on that. Would that be your pleasure as well for this one?
I think it would, yes.
We're happy to oblige.
Okay, thank you.
So you'd like me to prepare that and send that to you, Brian, and then you'll look at it and send it to him?
If you're so willing, I'm happy to take the lead, but if you'd like to, mine would be too.
Which would you prefer?
Mine would be, go first, and I'll take it.
All right, so I'll send it to you and you'll send it to them. All right, very good, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting that schedule and trying to help through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, with respect to the identity of the engineer, my understanding is the sort of the way that that will work is that it will be the building inspector with the assistance of an engineer.
That's correct. That's correct.
That's going to be confirmed.
Trying to make sure.
That needs to be confirmed with the Board of Selectmen's office. We don't have that authority to make that decision. That's our recommendation.
We'll confirm that, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And Tim, do you think you can get us some kind of a schedule for the completion of like Phase One and Phase Two?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he said he's going to work on within the next week.
The schedule was for Phase, the next phase.
Yeah.
But the two that are already, one's complete and one's nearing completion.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Yeah, I was, so I guess the confusion was, I was looking for just an overall schedule as to how you were moving forward and that.
Yeah, we'll do, that's what we typically provide at the building.
Yeah.
So we'll just keep going with the same thing, and if you want us to add, we'll...
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Mr. Chairman, I have a problem.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night, good to see you.
Thank you, Brian.
See you.
I don't know if you need to stay on with us.
How did this ever get so far out of control? We got no bond.
So there'll be two foundations in on each side.
So if the guy goes like this tomorrow...
Then they start the infrastructure. That was a good...
But that was all part of the MOU that was approved by the Board of Selectmen, not by us.
So you're, you're not going to be a great deal.
Well, I disagree with what they did, but...
We didn't get to that. I was worried that they were going to go all the way up and up here in the middle.
Right, that's why I'm concerned to get into the next phase, the place is three quarters built, and they have a base coat for the sidewalk, base coat for the road, base coat for... But if you can't do it now, I mean, I don't know.
You better get it done now.
I agree. Yep, which is, anything's possible. Yeah, I do. Yep, I know. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, are we all done?
Yeah, John, we're just signing Dolphin's...
Okay, all right, yeah.
So we're good.
And if anyone has any questions on those or any wording or thinking I missed, let me know.
Okay, I did read it before, before the meeting started, but I don't know what Mike has.
What's that? My apologies, that they came a little late, that's on me. I was hoping to get, you know, the minutes, and so I kind of held on for the last second, and then I ended up watching the video, so you're more intimate with those cases, although I think the deck was a pretty short year ago, there's nothing much I could have been. But the other ones are involved, so if there's anything I did pick up on, you know, you can make the changes as appropriate.
Brian, I did the best I could, so do you have a long-winded meeting?
Yeah, did a good job, it wasn't short.
On that, on that deck one for Parent and Dolan, Brian?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what that, they applied for a new special permit, and we had already given them one. They, what they actually were doing was just modifying their, their one they already had in place.
Right.
So is that in here? I didn't see that in here. Does that matter?
The modification, I just went right off the application.
Yep.
And the application, you know, is kind of generic.
Yep.
So either way, they get the same relief, what you call it, a modification.
Yep.
There's really no such thing as a modification of the special permit.
All right.
That, you know, we use that word for 40Bs, but there's really no such thing under 40A.
Okay.
It's really just a new application, so.
All right. And being a new application, that's not a repetitive petition being under two years?
Uh, no, it's only repetitive petition that was denied.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That's the second repetitive petition I've got, question I've got today, which is the first time in my entire life I've gotten a question I've had twice in one day. It never comes up.
If it's any help to you, I won't remember and I'll ask you again. Yep, Louis wasn't on that.
So if this guy renecks, we have to pay for it, right?